... meeting to order. We have a special study session tonight. I'll first turn it over to Stuart for roll call.
Mayor Slater. Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Mayor Proton Hodrick?
Here.
Councilmember McCowen? Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Slater and our city attorney are running a few minutes late, but we're going to go ahead and start the meeting and they'll be joining us. Councilman McCowen, we've also heard from him, is running a few minutes late, but we can proceed and we'll deal with this later if need be. Our discussion item tonight is medical marijuana. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Kitchnick to introduce the item and set things up.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Proton, and City Council. Alan Madsky is here to give a riveting presentation and educate everyone on medical marijuana and the laws and some of the changes. So I'll turn it right over to Alan because this presentation takes about 15 minutes.
Yeah, it's depending on how quickly I talk, yes. It's a lengthy presentation and we did submit it to City Council ahead of time. The only reason we did that is because some of the slides are lengthy and I probably will summarize several of them, but of course, if you have any questions, just let me know.
Before you get started, and you did receive a packet and this went out also with a presentation for your information.
All right. We were asked to address medical marijuana in Troy and specifically, we were asked to address two things. One is the growing operations that are allowed under the Medical Marijuana Act of 2008 as well as the new commercial facilities that are allowed under the new law that was passed in 2016 if a state license is obtained. Of course, you have to start out with a discussion about marijuana in the United States and I point this out because if you look at our ordinances, we spell marijuana with a J, but all the medical marijuana laws spell it with an H. So it's an acceptable spelling either way, I just didn't want people to think I don't know how to spell. So sometimes you see the J and sometimes with an H, but both are appropriate spellings. Quite frankly, marijuana is illegal under federal law, whether it's medical or otherwise. Every single medical marijuana facility in the United States is a violation of federal law right now. It's illegal to possess it, it's illegal to sell it, it's illegal to grow it. However, the previous federal administration has taken the position that as long as the people using medical marijuana comply with the state law, the prosecution is not a high priority. So in essence, medical marijuana facilities are not being prosecuted under federal law at this time. In fact, there are 29 states that have authorized the legal use of medical marijuana and there are eight states, including the District of Columbia, that have actually legalized recreation of marijuana. The main ingredient that affects a person's brain that is contained in the marijuana is of course THC and the main way that is ingested in the human body is through smoking. However, it can also be adjusted through what's known as marijuana-infused products, commonly known as edibles or medibles. This next slide, our purpose is kind of to show you how the medical marijuana industry packages the edibles. As you can see, it looks like soda pop, candy bars, or fruit juice. And that's a little scary sometimes, especially when you're dealing with children. In Michigan, as most of you know, that in 2008, a voter-initiated law was passed that allows for the medical use of marijuana. The law does not actually make marijuana legal in Michigan. What it actually says is that you are a registered patient or a registered caregiver under the act, you are immune from prosecution provided that you're involved with the medical use of marijuana. Of course, the medical use of marijuana also includes the growing of medical marijuana plants or marijuana plants, provided you comply with the number of plants allowed under the law. In 2016, the Medical Marijuana Act was amended and the key, there are a number of amendments, but the most specific one was now under the Marijuana Act in Michigan, those edibles that I showed you earlier, those can now be used and that would be allowed as medical use of marijuana. So in addition to the smoking, the law under Michigan now allows the edibles to be used for medical purposes. There's also some other provisions regarding how the marijuana has to be packaged and how it has to be tracked and I'll get into some of that later on in the presentation. Under the 2008 Act, even as amended, a person who's registered as a qualified patient is allowed to have up to 12 marijuana plants. However, a person who's registered as a primary caregiver is allowed to have up to five patients. And what that means is a caregiver could have 12 plants for each of his or her patients plus an additional 12 plants if they're also a patient. So in essence, under Michigan's medical marijuana law, a caregiver could grow up to 72 plants in one location and not be prosecuted. There are some limitations. The plants have to be maintained in a separate enclosed facility. Devices have to be in place to make sure that the plants can only be accessed by patients and caregivers. The law does allow outdoor growing of plants, but they have to be enclosed on all sides and you must not be able to see the marijuana from adjacent property. Michigan municipalities cannot prohibit the grow operations of up to 72 plants provided they comply with the MMA, the Marijuana Act. There is a recent case that does indicate the city may be able to impose some regulations, but we can't prohibit the 72-plant operations. In Troy, what has happened is a person will apply for a building permit and verify that their facility is such that they can enclose up to 72 plants and if they could do that, the permit will be issued. But once a building permit is issued, there really is no mechanism to ensure that the people growing the marijuana are in compliance with the state law. I think this is where Brent takes over for a few minutes.
I've got, yeah, not a few minutes. I've got two slides. So Troy does comply with the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. We've made the interpretation that they're permitted by right in our IB zoning district, which stands for Integrated Industrial Business. And we, under the act, care providers can grow in residential settings. However, I wanted to point this out that we have got home occupation standards that would make it impossible for someone to establish a commercial grow operation in a house. It's impossible to meet with the standards, but one in theory could grow in their home. Next slide, please. As of December 20th, 2016, we had 59 grow facilities in the city encompassing 33 buildings. That number today would be higher than that. That's going back, that's the last specific date that we had, but I'm confident that that number would be higher today than 59.
Russ Harder for Police Department had a few items to address.
So just going back to some of the things we responded to in 2014, we had nine calls for service. These were in, we shot in residential areas. Next slide, we made several arrests. A lot of the operations we shut down was due to really code enforcement, code violations, not meeting the standard. Next slide. 2015, continue with the calls for service for grow locations. Again, most of the things that we found were either they weren't in compliance with the 72 plants, which is, you can imagine how much space 72 plants would take up, so. And then as well, the, again, the code violations. Next slide. 2016, again, moving out a little more in the commercial end of the marijuana, we started seeing more and more of the commercial applications. Again, we shut down some grow operations due to not compliance either with the code or with building codes or with the Medical Marijuana Act itself. Next slide. So thus far, this one didn't make the slide, but we've had two commercial medical marijuana facilities that were broken into, one on Minnesota's listed here and the other one we just had on April 19th on Thunderbird Street. Both of those, in this case here in Minnesota, was a, turned out to be a non-compliant medical marijuana, well, turned out to be a non-compliant grow operation. We ended up getting a warrant on the victim of this for the non-compliance with the Medical Marijuana Act. And as well, the one on Thunderbird, he was in compliance, however, they were targeting for dry marijuana, so they targeted, broke into the building, didn't really take anything and it was a unique situation, so that's still under investigation.
Thanks, Russ. There's been numerous cases interpreting the medical marijuana law, but we want to mention one in particular, the Turbeek case. The city of Wyoming took the stance that many cities, including the city of Troy, took that grow operations were not allowed because zoning ordinance said land use that's illegal under federal law is illegal under zoning ordinance. And Mr. Turbeek challenged that under the Medical Marijuana Act and the case went all the way up to the Michigan Supreme Court and the court said a few things. First, the court said the city ordinance, the zoning ordinance was preempted by the Medical Marijuana Act because the city cannot prohibit what the state allows. The state allows medical marijuana grow operations, so the city can't prohibit that. Or the city of Wyoming made the next argument, well, the federal law preempts the state law. They argued that the state law was unconstitutional, violated federal laws, preempted. Well, the Supreme Court found a way to say that, no, the federal law does not preempt the state law with regard to key provisions, including the provisions relating to grow operations. So essentially, Mr. Turbeek won his case. There was one matter that came out of that case that is helpful to the municipalities. The Turbeek case did say that the state law does not foreclose law regulation of medical marijuana operation, so that's something we'll discuss a little later on in the presentation. As I indicated, there were three new laws passed in 2016 relating to medical marijuana. One is the Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act that allows the commercial licensed facilities, which I mentioned, and the other is the Marijuana Tracking Act, which is a law that requires the state to contract with an entity that's capable of monitoring all marijuana sales from seed to sale, as well as being able to verify where the caregivers and the qualified patients are. The third new law that was passed in 2016, I've already discussed, that was the amendment to the existing Medical Marijuana Act that allowed for the edibles. Although all these laws were effective on December 20th of 2016, the new commercial facilities allowed under the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act cannot even apply for a license until December 15th, 2017. The act also creates a new board to monitor and enforce the act and imposes taxes and fees, some of which I'll talk more about in a few minutes here. The new Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act authorizes up to five commercial licenses for these commercial facilities. One is a grower and as I talk about this more, I'll probably refer to this as a commercial grower, just to distinguish it from the grower of the 72 plants that's allowed under the Medical Marijuana Act. Processor, Safety Compliance Facility, Provisioning Center, and Secure Transporter. Those are the five new types of facilities that can be allowed if they obtain a license from the state. A commercial grower under this new act, if they obtain a license, could grow up to 1,500 plants in one facility, depending on whether they're a Class A, Class B, or Class C grower. The new law provides that any commercial grower has to have in its employ a registered caregiver with at least two years' experience. The law does say these new commercial growers must be in area zone for agricultural or industrial use and there's a limitation on cross-ownership, so a grower cannot also be a primary caregiver or have an interest in one of the other licensed facilities. You'll see that with all the new facilities. Oh, I was going to give up my seat, she says I can stay here. The second type of new commercial facility authorized under the new act is a processor. A processor is a commercial entity that would actually be involved in extracting the resin from the marijuana plants to make the edible products. Again, there's limitations on the cross-ownership. The third type of commercial facility that would be allowed under the new law is a Safety Compliance Facility and just as the name implies, this is a facility that would actually test medical marijuana for purity and also for some labeling requirements. Once again, there's the limitations on cross-ownership. The fourth type of facility allowed under the new act is a provisioning center, which essentially is a commercial operation that sells marijuana for profit. It's sometimes referred to as a dispensary, which is not allowed under the old Marijuana Act, but under the new act, if the entity obtains a state license as a provisioning center, they could sell medical marijuana to qualified patients and caregivers. And the fifth facility allowed under the new act, if a license is obtained, is a secure transporter, which would essentially transport medical marijuana products from one licensed facility to the other. This entity would also be able to store the medical marijuana. One of the things the new act allowing for these five facilities does, it does impose taxes and fees. There's a 3% tax on the gross receipts of provisioning centers and when the state collects that, there's a distribution formula which allows 25% to be returned to local municipalities, but that only applies to the municipalities that actually have the licensed facilities and is proportionate to the number of facilities that actually exist in the municipality. The new act does also allow the municipality that has the licensed facilities to charge up to $5,000 a year for a, as an administrative fee. Again, the other new act from 2016 is the Marijuana Tracking Act. It requires the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs in the state to establish a monitoring system to track medical marijuana from seed to sale and also be able to verify who the registered patients and caregivers are. Under the law, we didn't add this to the slide, but the law says that the system has to be in place within 180 days after a contract is awarded by the state. Just in the last week, the state has selected an entity in Florida to be the tracking system for the state, although the actual contract apparently hasn't been worked out, but they have selected the entity that would do the tracking. The other thing the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act specifically says is that a municipality does not have to allow the commercial facilities to exist. The only way one of these new entities could get a commercial license from the state is if the city where they want to locate has an ordinance specifically opting in indicating they're going to allow these facilities. If the, if the city does choose to allow facilities, they don't have to allow all five of them. For instance, they could allow one or two or three or any number of facilities that they choose to do so. Again, if a municipality allows the facilities, they could charge up to $5,000 a year for each facility. And in addition to adopting the ordinance allowing the facilities, the new law does allow a municipality to adopt a separate zoning ordinance that would regulate where the facilities could be located, as well as provide some other regulations, but a municipality cannot regulate the purity or pricing of the medical marijuana or interfere with any of the statutory regulations. And this is a point I think I need to make, is regardless of whether the city allows the new commercial facilities, it really has no effect on the 72-plant grow operations. If we choose to allow the commercial facilities, people could still have the 72-plant operations without a license from the state, or if we choose not to allow the commercial facilities, the 72-plant operations still cannot be prohibited, because those would still be allowed under the act that was passed in 2008. Under the law establishing the new commercial facilities, the municipality does have some reporting requirements. If they allow the facilities and there's an application received at the state level, the city has to provide certain information to the state, including its ordinance and any regulations that apply, plus a description of violation related to those ordinance by the particular applicant. The law says the new board that decides whether a license should be issued may consider that information, it doesn't say it has to consider that information, and that information that's obtained from an applicant is exempt from the Freedom of Information Act. Getting to the city's options, with regard to the commercial facilities, one option, of course, is to do nothing. If the city does not adopt an ordinance, the commercial facilities cannot exist in the city. Again, the city could adopt an ordinance allowing one or two or three or any number of facilities if it chooses to do so. If the city does allow for some facilities, it could limit the types of facilities and it could also pass the zoning ordinance, as I've indicated, which could do things like make the commercial facilities be subject to special use approval, which of course would require a public hearing. But again, as I've indicated, the municipality cannot pass any regulations that would conflict with the state law. Continuing with the city's options, if the city chooses to opt out of the commercial facilities, based on the Turbeek case I just mentioned earlier, it's our opinion the city can still adopt regulations relating to the smaller facilities, the 72-plant facilities, such as inspection requirements, maybe a permit or licensing requirement, and so on and so forth. Again, this is applying to the grow operations of the 72-plant facilities. The city could also adopt a zoning ordinance amendment limiting those grow facilities to certain areas or requiring a special land use, but I should point out, as you're aware, there are some grow operations in the city already. A zoning amendment would not apply to the existing facilities because those facilities would be deemed not performing use of the zoning law, but it's our opinion we can pass a licensing ordinance requiring a city license or city permit that would require inspections as a condition of approval to make sure there's compliance with the state law and that would apply even to the existing facilities because that would be a police power regulation, which any health, safety, welfare regulations such as a licensing ordinance could be applied retroactively to the existing facilities, as well as to any new grow operations that are initiated in the city. Why would we want to do commercial facilities? Because it reflects the attitude of the majority of the residents who approve medical marijuana. It does have a potential to focus production to specific areas, as I indicated. If we allow the commercial facilities, we can pass zoning regulations limiting them to specific areas, which would be helpful for law enforcement to monitor. Because of the 3% tax, the distribution to municipalities, the $5,000 fees, allowing the commercial facilities could bring money in for the city, it could create new jobs, it could provide a need in the community to provide access to medical marijuana to people who are really in need of the medical marijuana because of debilitating pain or some other medical condition. These are the reasons why the city might not want to allow the commercial facilities. One is the cost to enforce. As Russ indicated, just with the smaller operations, there's been a lot of police contact. If you start allowing these large commercial facilities, it would involve a lot of code enforcement as well as police responses. Another reason we may not wish to allow the commercial facilities is, again, that could result in an increase in crime. People break into the small facilities. If you have these larger facilities where up to 1,500 plants are growing, there's a likelihood that there could be an increase in crime with people trying to obtain marijuana for reasons other than medical use. Some other considerations. One of the theories we have as to why so many medical marijuana grow operations has initially started in Troy is because we believe some of the entities are anticipating the city might allow the commercial facilities and so they're starting up in the smaller facilities with the hope that if we allow the commercial facilities- that would be a police power regulation, which any health, safety, welfare regulation such as a licensing ordinance could be applied retroactively to the existing facilities, as well as to any new grow operations that are initiated in the city. Why would we want to do commercial facilities? Because it reflects the attitude of the majority of the residents who approve medical marijuana. It does have a potential to focus production to specific areas, as I indicated. If we allow the commercial facilities, we can pass zoning regulations limiting them to specific areas, which would be helpful for law enforcement to monitor. Because of the 3% tax, the distribution to municipalities, the $5,000 fees, allowing the commercial facilities could bring money in for the city. It could create new jobs. It could provide a need in the community to provide access to medical marijuana to people who are really in need of the medical marijuana because of debilitating pain or some other medical condition. These are the reasons why the city might not want to allow the commercial facilities. One is the cost to enforce. As Russ indicated, just with the smaller operations, there's been a lot of police contact. If you start allowing these large commercial facilities, it would involve a lot of code enforcement, as well as police responses. Another reason we may not wish to allow the commercial facilities is, again, that could result in an increase in crime. People break into the small facilities. If you have these larger facilities where up to 1,500 plants are growing, there's a likelihood that there could be an increase in crime with people trying to obtain marijuana for reasons other than medical use. Some other considerations. One of the theories we have as to why so many medical marijuana grow operations has initially started in Troy is because we believe some of the entities are anticipating the city might allow the commercial facilities, and so they're starting up in the smaller facilities with the hope that if we allow the commercial facilities, they could just expand those facilities. If the city chooses not to allow the commercial facilities, the theory is a lot of those may relocate to facilities that do allow, or to cities that do allow the commercial facilities. Another consideration is, as you are aware from what I mentioned earlier, it is still illegal to have medical marijuana under federal law. If the new administration decides to start enforcing federal law, then there would be, of course, no point in allowing medical marijuana facilities in Troy because they'd all be prosecuted. On the other hand, if the federal law policy doesn't change, and the Michigan voters approve recreational use of marijuana, then that, that could have effect on medical marijuana facilities as well. With all that, we have some specific recommendations. Our first recommendation is that the city specifically opt out of allowing the commercial facilities under the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. With regard to the 72 plant operations allowed under the Medical Marijuana Act, it's our recommendation the city initiate a moratorium on issuing new permits for a 180-day period to allow the city to consider some regulations that would be applicable to the, those grow facilities. We also recommend hosting a meeting with some of the building owners, contractors, and caregivers currently that have the grow operations to educate them on the law that we're considering passing, as well as to obtain voluntary consent to inspect their facilities, to see if they're in compliance with the act. We also recommend applying other consent instructions on a periodic basis, and if warranted, it's our recommendation if we have any information or evidence indicating that any of the current grow operations are violating the current law, that we seek search warrants and prosecute appropriately. And questions?
I'd just welcome the mayor to our meeting. Just to be clear, he was out representing the city at an important matter, and we're glad you were able to get here to continue to run the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Yeah, Lori and I and Brian were up at Circuit Court, so we got some good news to report from up there. But thank you. Thank you for, thank you, Ellen, for your presentation. I did get an opportunity to review the PowerPoint in the packet, and I did listen to City Attorney Bloom's presentation at the mayor's dinner last month, so I'm sure there are some questions. So, did we talk about the procedure with those in the audience?
No, I didn't.
Okay. For those of you that wish to speak this evening, after we have a discussion at the table, you'll have an opportunity to speak in public comment. After that, please keep in mind, we like you to limit your, your time to three minutes each, to give everyone an opportunity to speak, because we do have a limited amount of time, and this will be an opportunity to just speak to the city council. It will not be a question and answer or interaction this evening. So, just, it is just public comment. So, would like to be first.
Okay. One question. The 72 plant operations that are now in the city or more, they are permitted, and so we know where they, all of them are?
We know where they are based on the going permit application.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Actually, I had a question for Russ, too, then. With, with the two break-ins that we had, what is, in your opinion, what, if they didn't steal anything, what were they looking for?
Well, the first one, they obviously stole a lot of marijuana.
Oh, they did, okay.
Yeah. So, the second one, we believe that they were looking, the plants that were there were still in production, so they weren't ready for use yet.
Okay.
So, that's all we could, you know, we still don't know whether it was a competitor breaking into, you know, I mean, it's, it's, again, it's still under investigation, so right now it's just speculation.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Councilman Anderson?
Actually, more of a statement. You know, I'm a little conflicted in this, because I know it's kind of coming our way, but, you know, I have a, I would prefer nothing ever to come in the city borders. And looking at the presentation that you gave us, and also looking at some, some of the things that were distributed to us earlier, if we, if we opt out, is that a full, no, I mean, if we opt out, nobody can come in here and do business, or is that not the case? Because, you know, I've seen about 14 different options of what could happen, so.
If we opt out, then nobody could operate any of the commercial facilities, any of the five commercial facilities allowed under the state law that requires a license from the state.
Okay.
But it does not prevent the smaller operations, because the smaller operations under the Medical Marijuana Act, the 72 plant limit, does not require a license from the state.
Okay, and opting, so then opting out, what happens to the, to the few that are here already if we, if we opt out? They can still remain? They're grandfathered?
They're, they could still remain because we can't prohibit them. We, right, we cannot, although like I've indicated, we may be able to impose some regulations. They're not really grandfathered, but they're already allowed under the state law, and we can't prohibit them.
So, your recommendation to, the first one was to opt out?
Correct.
But, but that doesn't necessarily fix the problem. In my book, it doesn't fix the problem. So, but opting in would allow us to make heavier ordinance that would apply to the ones that exist here?
We could do that whether we opt in or not. If we opt in, it only relates to the new commercial facilities. It really has no effect on what we could do with regard to the facilities that are here. We can, it's our opinion, based on the Terbeek case, we can adopt some new regulations that are applicable to the smaller operations, but we can't prohibit them. As long as they comply with the state law, we cannot prohibit them.
So, opting in or opting out still allows the small operations to come to town and to do this sort of business?
That is correct.
Okay. And we didn't really talk about, you know, that's really just a grow operation. We didn't talk really about the retailer, the other four legs of the business, right?
Well, under the Michigan Medical Marijuana laws passed in 2008, there is no retail allowed. Dispensaries are not allowed. If you hear that term in other municipalities, which you probably had, technically, those are illegal. The only way you could actually have a facility that sells medical marijuana now is if they get a license under the new act, and then the municipality allows that.
Okay. And a question on that is, it's my understanding if we, if we don't opt in, or if we opt out, anybody in Troy could not apply for a license to the state. Is that correct, or not correct?
They, you know, I might have to review what the actual statute says, but they can't, a license cannot be granted. If they apply, if they apply to the state, and the state notifies us, if we don't have an ordinance, the state won't grant the license. So, so the only way one of the new commercial facilities can exist in Troy is if Troy allows, specifically allows one of them by ordinance.
Okay. And then, so there, if we opt in, then we would have to make ordinance that would tightly prohibit, restrain, whatever we want to call those operations?
We'd have to.
Okay. I'll regroup with somebody else.
Sure. Councilman Baker. I had a lot of thoughts. I'm sure we'll get, talk, talk more about them this evening as well. You said that your opinion, and I'm sure City Attorney Bloom's opinion as well, obviously, that under the Terbeek case, we could put some restrictions on the existing 72 plant holder?
Yes, that's our opinion. The Terbeek case is pretty general, though. It's not specific, so we're not saying that, well, it's our opinion we could impose some regulations. What those regulations are, we probably would do a little more research before we develop those regulations.
That was my next question. Have any other municipalities done this and challenged, or used the Terbeek cases?
There are some municipalities that have licensing and inspection requirements. As far as if any of those have been challenged, I don't believe so yet. At least no published cases anymore.
That's it for right now.
Councilman Abraham?
And just to clarify, the moratorium that's one of the recommendations, that is permitted by the MNA and by the Terbeek case?
The moratorium is, municipalities have been allowed to pass moratoriums as long as there's a good reason for doing so. The city cannot just put a moratorium forever, but there have been moratoriums that have stopped the issuance of permits for various land uses to allow the municipality to develop regulations for the health, safety, and welfare of all, of the municipality and its residents. So, you have to justify the moratorium, because if you don't, then the challenge is you're taking so much property without due process. So, moratoriums have been upheld by the courts in various land use cases, but the city has to have a good reason for doing it.
And a time limit, too.
The law doesn't specifically say a time limit, but if there is no time limit, it would, it would be subject to challenge.
Good. Mayor Proton Holder, did you have any questions before I go back to Councilman Baker?
I have questions swirling and yet not concreted or articulated.
Well, an increase in crime, as we've heard, I mean, there's going to be more, and wouldn't that be a good reason, then?
That would be a good reason.
Okay. Does that, we hear from people that, that had, our last meeting that said an apartment building is going to bring increased crime, so I'm sure that, you know, they would, it would be on our side that marijuana grow facilities would do the same.
Yes.
Well, my first thought, are you ready?
I am.
Okay.
And I don't know that anybody has the answer, but here we are jungling this and hanging over our head is what the new administration's tone and tenor is going to be. Do we have an indication of that?
We know that the new attorney general opposed to medical marijuana, but as far as what actions he's going to take, we have no specifics on that. So, the answers we really don't know at this point.
So, from the federal level, we're, it's almost as if we need to set that aside as we make our decisions, and what we struggle through here could end up getting upended depending on?
It could be. That was why we put it as one of the considerations. It's, if we allow medical marijuana facilities, and all of a sudden the federal government starts prosecuting them, then, then there's, there was no reason to pass the law, or allowing in the first place.
Correct. Okay. Okay.
Just off the top of my head, it just seems that we should do a moratorium if we don't do nothing, and that we should be first focusing on doing a local ordinance to govern what we have already, because whether we opt in or we opt out, we still want to probably do it. So, it seems to me that's the first thing we should be working on, is, is a local ordinance to govern, govern the 72 that we have and what we want. Seems like that should be the first thing we do, in my opinion, because we got to do that anyways. My blush on the federal government is that we should never rely on the federal government to make our decisions for us.
Right.
That's my first blush on the federal government. And my, just my third thought going into this is that there seems to still be a lot of questions out there, and it seems to me that if we do the moratorium, we start focusing on getting an ordinance in place that we are going to need anyways, that I think there's a lot more information that I need to collect and listen to and visit. I have visited two operations in Troy. I'd like to visit more. I'd like to talk to more. I'd like to do that. Just for my personal, I, I don't, I would like to wait to opt in or opt out from my opinion. That's just my opinion. So, Councilman?
Another question there, in the slide deck, there was a statement that said that proceeding with opting in would reflect the attitude of the majority of residents. You know, I was wondering what data that was based off. That is 2008 or 2016?
It was a general statement in that Michigan residents have approved medical marijuana in general, and that was a general statement that since the majority of residents voted for medical marijuana, if allowing more access to medical marijuana would be consistent with that general.
It wasn't necessarily based off just Troy residents?
No, it wasn't. We didn't do a survey of Troy residents.
In 2010?
2008.
Yep.
Councilman Anderson?
I, you know, I noticed that there's a need for medical marijuana in certain cases, right? Certain, certain diseases and that sort of thing. And, you know, I've seen it myself. I've heard stories, read in the papers. So, I understand that there's, there's that need out there, but when you see the picture of the medibles, you know, the last thing we need is at every BP station, you know, medibles hanging on the shelves. You know, I don't, hopefully, Michigan doesn't go that route, but, you know, it seems more and more likely that that's probably the direction that the state and the country as a whole is going, which is unfortunate. But, that said, I don't think that, you know, Troy needs to be the place that people go to grow marijuana. I mean, it, you know, heck, they grow corn in fields up north, you know, and I know that's kind of more of a simplistic view, but, you know, why do we have to have it in our industrial section here in Troy? And I would rather see machine shops and that sort of thing bringing revenue into those, those areas. So, the revenue aspect and job aspects of this, you know, it means almost nothing to me. Not that revenue and jobs don't mean something, but in this industry, I just can't get my arms around it. So, that's kind of my motivation for doing whatever we can to really, really tighten this up. And the operations we have here, how do we, in the future, so let's say that we put a moratorium on it, and we talk about this, and we tighten up restrictions, how do we make it so that our police officers can go in randomly and, and check these things out, and, you know, and not in an announced, you know, hey, we're coming in, and we clean up your act? You know, can we knock on the door and ever do that?
It would be a condition of whatever type of permit or license we require of the city that they allow inspections. And so, in order to keep their permit under the city ordinance that we believe we could pass, they would have to allow periodic inspections. What periodic means, we probably have to work on that, but that would be how it would be enforced. So, the inspection, if they want to keep their permit, they would have to allow the inspection. If they don't allow the inspection, then it would be a violation that could be prosecuted. We could prosecute it as a misdemeanor or a civil infraction. Those are items we have to discuss as we try to formulate the ordinance.
And further than that, then, is there, is there a way that the city can make in their ordinance some sort of surveillance on these facilities as a requirement, or no?
We would, maybe. I mean, any, any regulation, any regulation has to be a reasonable regulation. We can't, I would say probably yes, but we would obviously review that, and if we can, we could use that in the ordinance.
Councilman Baker? Sorry, just to be clear, so it's your opinion that we could create an ordinance that would go back and regulate the existing smaller operations that are already here?
As a, as a-
And make them apply for permit and make surveill, or not surveillance, but make inspection a part of that? I mean, that's what you're thinking, you're talking about. Really? I mean, it seems hard-
Well, we would justify it-
-from the standpoint of they're already here and operating. Sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. We would justify it as a general police power regulation. Zoning ordinance is, once somebody's using the land, you're right, it's a non-performing use, and that's why I said a zoning ordinance would not apply to the existing operations. But there have been cases upholding various types of, of what's known as a police power regulation. For instance, signage is one thing I could think of. I know that in the past, we've applied new sign provisions to existing signs, and those have been justified as a police regulation to, for health, safety, and welfare reasons, because it applies not just to the land use, but the other aspects of the operation that could affect the general public.
Okay. I'm just thinking about litigation, I mean, 70-plus operations or grows or whatever. I mean, that could be an extensive- I mean, that could be an extensive amount of litigation if it was too extreme or, you know, difficult. Not saying it shouldn't be done, but a consideration I think that needs to be taken into account.
It's, yeah. Councilwoman Abraham.
Have any grow operations indicated that they'd be willing to have voluntary inspections? I know, Mayor, you just mentioned that you've been to two facilities, so clearly they're, they're all right with someone stopping by and visiting their facilities, but do we have an indication unwillingness of others? Is that, were those two more of an outlier? Is there any way that we could gauge that? I'm not sure if we have the right person to direct that question to, but I just could answer.
I don't know the answer to that. Maybe someone from the police department might be able to address that.
Yeah, we have had a few that have offered for us to come in, and a couple of those, we did go in on voluntary, and we have found violations, so we've taken enforcement action. So what to say is very difficult, if you look at the law, of the amount of plants you can have, amount of prime material you can have, if you just do the math, it doesn't really equate. It's the amount, these plants, you can get up to four pulls a year off of them, and so, and if you have five patients, I mean, that's a lot of marijuana smoking. So, but yes, there's been a couple that have volunteered, and there's been a few that have shut the door on us, and then the next step of the process is to get a search warrant, and that's a, that's a whole nother avenue.
The other comment I would make is we also have to be very mindful that HIPAA laws also are a factor in whatever it is that we do, should we decide to come up with some sort of regulation in terms of licensing or permits or even, I'll say surveillance, because then you, person's right to privacy if they have a medical condition. So that's another factor that I think we would want to consider, should we, should we go that route of thinking through what ordinance could be.
Yes, sir.
So the surveillance aspect is a good point, but the surveillance aspect of it, we're talking specifically grow operations, there shouldn't be any retail or HIPAA situations in a grow operation, correct?
Yeah.
Patients can grow, all right, the caregivers.
Caregivers can be a patient.
Can be a patient.
If, if it somehow discloses the name of a, of a patient, they could, they could be a privacy issue. The laws, all the information that caregivers and patients share with the state now is confidential. In fact, when we have cases involving medical marijuana, we can't get information regarding the people who have applied for medical marijuana cards unless they actually give us a release. So it's, so there's already a lot of privacy considerations in the existing law, and of course, we would have to take those into account with any type of work that we do.
One of the areas of heartburn that I have with this is the, the fact that, you know, just about anybody can get a medical marijuana card, whether they really need it or don't need it, is the state. I thought I saw something on one of the slides. Is the state trying to tighten that aspect up?
They're trying to create a registry that would allow law enforcement to obtain information on who actually has the cards and who actually is a caregiver. So yes, they are, the new tracking act is going to work towards that end, so we have a better idea of who the patients are, but it has to be for a law enforcement purpose to get that information.
If I could, this is an agenda item on the agenda this evening, and we can certainly discuss it more at that point. It's close to seven o'clock, and I want to give an opportunity for some, at least some public comment here. If we don't get to everyone at this segment, when we go into our council meeting, there will be an opportunity to speak there also. So if we don't get to everybody here, we will give you an opportunity to speak at the regular city council meeting. So is it okay if we move to public comment and if there's any more discussion, we can have a on the agenda item? Great, I see a show of hands, who wants to speak this evening on this item? One, two, three, four. Okay, that's not too bad. If you could try to limit it to three minutes, we would appreciate it, and we'll start with you, sir. If you could just give your name.
I'll, I'll set the pace a little while under three.
Use the microphone, please.
Sure. Hi. My name is Jim Nodden, I'm a longtime Troy resident. I wanted to come here to show my support for law enforcement here. We have great law enforcement in this community, I want to make sure that we give them the tools and opportunity to, to regulate, to, to monitor, to enforce the things that, that need to be enforced. They, they do a great job, their plate is, is very full. My own personal opinion is we don't need to add something more onto their plate and potentially bear the cost of that as well as the community. I have a 16-year-old daughter, I don't want this kind of activity in the neighborhood. One of the benefits of being in Troy is low crime, and I'd like to see us keep it that way. So in terms of my own personal preference, that's where I come down.
Good evening, Nancy, if you could just, if you could just, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Nancy Morrison, and I just wanted to make a couple comments. I don't know if you are aware, but the average age of a medical marijuana cardholder is like mid-30s, and it's a white male with a history of substance abuse. I also wanted to make a comment, something similar to Ed Pennington mentioned. You know, I've attended the city council meetings, I've heard residents be concerned about storage facilities and apartment complexes, so how are they going to react in regards to grow facilities in their neighborhood? We've learned a lot of lessons from information from Colorado, and they do have, they have had an increase in crime, in drug driving. We're also finding out that a lot of cities in Colorado, they have more dispensaries than Starbucks and McDonald's. And of course, I think you all know, I am all for the prevention of drug and alcohol abuse, so I would like to opt out. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please go forward.
We just going down the line?
Yes, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Michael Stein, I'm an attorney in the Bloomfield Hills area, and I represent several dispensary owners in Detroit and individuals that operate cultivation operations in the city of Troy under the patient caregiver system. And I apologize, I missed some of what you had said earlier, but I respectfully disagree with your analysis on allowing patient caregiver right now in an industrial setting. I believe that the Medical Marijuana Act, you couldn't prevent someone from growing for themselves in their home, but that doesn't mean that you can not, you can, you know, that you can't allow them, you cannot, you can permit them not to grow in an industrial or commercial setting, so to speak, which a lot of other cities have done. Troy made the decision a long time ago to give business permits for individuals to do this, or for people to do this here. Now you have, I think, I missed the total, was 72 or something, is that what it was? 70 places already existing that have obtained the business permits here, and now you guys are almost trying to look backward to see what you can do to regulate those. It should have been an inception. You should have said, we don't, we're not going to allow you to grow in a commercial setting. You can grow in your house because that's what the, you know, you don't want to step on people's toes on the Medical Marijuana Act, but that would only provide for them to grow their 12 plants in their house. You guys allowed it in a commercial setting, you had people descend upon the community to do that in the business setting, and now, I believe you cited it, if you try to impose significant regulation or regulation on them now, you are going to face a fierce backlash from the, from the individuals that currently operate these. I know, again, I probably represent a handful of them, but I know that based upon what is being discussed here today is going to lead to significant fallout when you have 70 property owners that are now going to have people that are going to have a problem with their leases. These are people that have set up to do it under the commercial licensing system, because obviously one would assume that if a city allows you to grow right now, I guess, you would assume that they would opt into the state licensing. And that may be an incorrect assumption, but certainly you're more likely to allow it in a city that has allowed patient caregiver growing in a commercial setting right now. So I think that you're really going to have a problem going back and trying to regulate the ones that already have business permits, but I think your whole analysis is backward on this. The, under the, under the state licensing system, the regulations in place are 10 times what they are right now for patient caregivers. Patient caregivers, all they need is a business permit, anyone can go in and get that. Under the state licensing system, you're heavily vetted. I mean, you can't have any, I don't know if you guys discussed it, but you can't have any felonies, you have to prove your business viability, you have to have good moral character, and you have to get approved from the state. So the state licensing gives you all the regulation on your security systems, everything, it takes care of everything, whereas the patient caregiver system, there's, there's zero oversight on it. I think what you should be strongly considering is opting in under the state licensing system and looking to see what you can do to kind of undo what you did with the, with the patient caregiver system. Again, I don't know what, what can be done to undo that, but the state licensing system is, is, the only people that can go in there are true professionals. You have to have the financial resources to even be able to do it. So those individuals, when I hear it's going to bring crime and this or that, that's, that's total nonsense. All it's going to bring are people that don't have records. Those are the only people that can get that license. And if you look at House Bill 4209, it clearly lays out what the requirements are to be able to even apply for that license. So the regulation under that is going to be more stringent than it is liquor licenses. I just make one more point, I'm sorry.
If you could just wind down.
Yeah, yeah, I will. Mr. Henderson, to say that, you know, I don't think that you want someone interfering with your relationship with your doctor, and neither do I. If my doctor writes me a prescription for medical marijuana, the outside world has to recognize that I have a right to have a relationship with my doctor. If your problem is that too many people are getting licenses, then your problem is with the issuing physicians. But to say that there's people that have cards that don't have it, now you're challenging a doctor's opinion, and I don't think anybody wants anyone else challenging the opinion of a doctor between their personal relationship. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Andrew Gash, I'm a business owner, also a caregiver and property owner in the city of Troy. I just want to say that the deck you made and the presentation was pretty accurate, it was a drive-up point. A couple of things that I think he probably hit on base was, is that the 72 plant count grows right now cannot operate under the new state law. So all those operations eventually will get phased out just, just by natural process. They cannot sell to a dispensary, they cannot sell to, they cannot transfer from a safe transport to a dispensary, it just won't happen. The other thing is the freedom has, the city has the freedom to decide on what they want, how many they want, and where they want. Those state licenses, like you said, they're, it's going to be like an A-game license. It's not every Joe is going to be able to get a license. And he said that he went through the, the company break-ins, there were, I'd like to say the majority of those are probably residential, I'm not sure if that's right or wrong, but from my understanding, there's been one break-in to a commercial facility. Every commercial facility that I know of has cameras. Everything's recorded. When something does happen, it is reported. From my understanding, there's been one break-in in a commercial facility so far. The other thing is, we're talking about the Trump administration, right now the Trump administration is against recreational marijuana, not medical. State of Michigan has not allowed recreational marijuana, it's medical marijuana. So I don't think that that's going to be an issue, I don't believe that is, and I can't see it ever happening. Now, when the state decides to go recreational, that might be an issue somewhere down the line, but that's if the state goes recreational. Increased crime, like I said, I don't really believe that there's going to be increased crime in the grow facilities. A lot of the break-ins are probably residential, they're probably people who the neighbors knew something and something wrong happened, but the commercial facilities all have cameras, security. I know that even my facility, we've got cameras and everything's on watch and everything's locked up and where it should be. I welcome law officials, I welcome everybody to come take a look, and I welcome any one of you guys would like to see the facility, come and show it, the doors are wide open. Mr. Henderson, you were talking about regulations and having gummy bears on the shelves. The state report has not been assigned yet, the rules, regulations have not been propagated yet, so the fact that gummy bears on the shelves, that's not even, we don't even know that's going to happen yet. We don't even know what the regulations are going to be, we're not even know what the packaging regulations are going to be. So that's why I would urge to say yes on the moratorium, but hold off on opting out until we find out who the board is and what the rules and regulations are. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak tonight here? As I indicated, we'll be talking about this further at the Tracy Council meeting on the agenda that, I forget which one it is, but you're welcome to join us in there if you think of something else that you want to say, you're more than welcome to speak there. It's after seven o'clock, so there must be something important to discuss, we are adjourned. We'll see you in City Council.